Buenos dias a todos, hoy es martes 11 de agosto en las 11:15 de la mañana. Todos estamos, al principio, dando una vuelta al consejo de la ciudad, con unos 8.000 residentes presentes, estamos bien acá, sí, no están ausentes. Sí, su presencia es necesaria en la cámara, si te voy a las 10:20 y todos no te consigo, presentemente está la... Tenemos que hacerlo.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chancellors, and welcome to a meeting of the Washington State Council for today, Tuesday, August 5, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can view live via webcast on the City's homepage, or via council phone.
Karen S. Garcetti, Gruhl, Han Labange, Lado Misakowski Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, Vera Gosso, Weiss, Sainpedia, 10 members present and in favor, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for meeting with matters appearing on today's agenda. This is Tuesday, and the first meeting of the week, as is customary, and we have scheduled our salute to the flag. If I can ask everyone to please stand, and ask Councilmember Reyes to lead our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, everybody, please rise. Put your right hand over your heart, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Reyes, and colleagues from the record, there's a young man who is taking the place of Councilmember Zine today.
Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Councilmember Perry seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. I believe there's a card on the item, and if the council wishes it should continue the hearing in the ordinance to September 12, 2003.
We do have a card submitted under item number one, let's call it special, we will hear from members of the public today, and continue the public hearing at that point.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, it's 2001 brush clearance, and there are four parcels, I believe there aren't any cards on this matter.
We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item number two, therefore we shall be in the public hearings, open and closed. Are there members of the council wishing to call item two special? Saying none, Madam Clerk, on item number two, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items three through 10 now before us, any specials we should want?
Ms. Han, item number three, special for Ms. Han.
Item three called special, any other specials?
I'm ahead of everybody.
Any other specials? Saying none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
Those are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, 11 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held, and items 11 and 12 are pipeline franchises, and the bits have been received, and there are two companies, and they are listed on the agenda in Council's recommended recommendations.
Colleagues, items 11 through 27 now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, satisfying the public hearings. Are there any specials? Mr. Ludlow.
Item 26.
26 called special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Any other specials? 11 through 27 now before us. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ice.
Those are approved.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special, and as such, there are parts from the public.
Item number one now before us, and the council calls forward Susan Kennedy, followed by J. Eric Freedner.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Susan Kennedy. I'm here in opposition to the streetlighting opposition for the fair and valerio district of Sun Valley. I've lived 40 years in my present house. My block has lights, so why include my block in the proposed district? As far as I can tell, most of the proposed district has lights. No reasons were given for doing this other than new modern lights. Well, I have lights on my block, and according to old adage, if they ain't broke, don't fix it. You didn't say anything about crime prevention, but most of the crime in my neighborhood is committed, and they like it. You didn't elaborate on what you mean by new modern, if you mean pink, they are innovating, as proven by the late John Op of op light fame. And if you mean those god awful yellow sodium vapor lights, please, I beg of you, don't put those catastrophes there. I and most of my neighbors have installed additional security lights on our own property for driveways and backyards. One big advantage of our own personal lights is that we have control of an off switch, if they get into people's lights, into people's windows, inhibit sleeping. Other parts of the city that I've read about, notably Pacoima, and also parts of Granada Hills that I drive through on a weekly basis, have no lights, whatever. So if there is a necessity, a need to send out contracting bids, send them over to Pacoima and Granada Hills, where the people are begging to pay for the lights. New modern sounds very nice, but I'd like a new modern car, and nearly $1,800 that you want to ding me for these lights that I don't want, would go a long way to helping me get a new car. This is a bad economy, and I have a senior citizens' dwindling income. I'm perfectly happy with the lights I have, and as far as I can tell, my neighbors are also. So if you do this anyway, you're only going to hasten my departure from the city of L.A., like so many businesses have. And if you really have to spend the money, spend it on something like this, that you find in every shopping mall, or better signage, because it took me two trips to Mr. Robertson down at the mayor's office to figure out where to come within this building. So I am opposed to the streetlight proposition, thank you.
Thank you very much, J. Eric Freedner, who's our next speaker.
Good morning. I am J. Eric Freedner, resident of the area. I had submitted a written protest, which I believe you may have, concerning the fact that when the streetlighting proposal was first made to us... We were told that the installation cost of the lights would be about $700 per house. I believe that came from either Councilman Bernardi, or Councilman Alarcón. As I also pointed out, a number of people have signed the initial petition, have moved out of the neighborhood, or have passed away, because a lot happens in about 18 years. During the time, the area to be lighted, expanded by maybe two or three times, originally it was just a few blocks. Then more blocks were added. We were told that when it expanded, the cost per house for installation would drop. Recently, we've just gotten word that now the cost per house is something like $1,500 or more. My house is being assessed $1,648 if this would pass. It seems to be somewhat unfair to start out with a petition of one sort, and one proposed price, and one map. It ended up with something quite a bit different. Thank you. I thank you very much for listening. This concludes public comment on item number one. Are there members wishing to be heard on item number one? Saying none, have the report and recommendations before us.
Mr. President, that one should be continued for the, to continue the hearing in ordinance to September 2nd.
To August, excuse me, September 2nd, which is three weeks from today. Next item, please.
Item number three was called special by Councilmember Han.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Han on item three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. This was a motion that I introduced earlier, as a result of continually being very apprehensive in the harbor area about any potential disaster in the Port of Los Angeles, Port of Long Beach complex, whether or not it has to do with terrorism, or whether or not it's the odds of something happening there as a result of the containers that come in and out of the harbor on a daily basis. And the refineries in the harbor area have a system where they, in the event of an explosion, in the event of anything that happens to the refineries, they actually have a system where they automatically call the home numbers of residents in a particular geographical area surrounding the refineries. I asked whether or not the Port of Los Angeles could come up with a similar program, and they got together with the refineries, found out what they did, and actually got in place a program that does just the same thing. It utilizes the telephone network of homes, businesses in the area, so if anything happens at the Port of Los Angeles, we can automatically, quickly notify residents in terms of what they should be doing, and what kind of disaster it is. The second part of this motion, when it came to commerce, we also asked whether or not we could do something citywide. That is still the fear, I think, of a lot of people. If something happens big in the city, how can we quickly notify people in Los Angeles of what the disaster is, and then what's the proper action that should be taken, whether or not you stay inside, whether or not you have to evacuate, whether or whatever it is that you have to do. We've asked for ITA to work with LAPD, to work with the emergency preparedness department, and to work with other departments in the city, to come up with a similar program that will quickly and effectively notify people in Los Angeles in the event of a disaster or disaster. One of the ideas that came forward, which we're also asking them to do, apparently there's other places in the country where they develop, for lack of a better word, canned messages, which can automatically be played, depending on the disaster, depending on the emergency, and depending on the appropriate action that needs to be taken by residents, that we can play on Channel 35, we can play on radio stations. Working with our cable franchise agreements, to see whether or not we can override programming that is happening on cable stations with these canned messages. So that's the second part of this, so we're asking them to come back, tell us what the plan is, and hopefully that can get your approval for this action as we move forward. And I believe there's people from the harbor department, if we want to ask them, we have the representative of the police here, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council Chancellors, and welcome to a meeting of the Washington State Council for today, Tuesday, August 5, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public, and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can view live via webcast on the City's homepage, or via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Karen S. Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, Labange, Lado Misakowski Parks, Perry Reyes, Smith, Vera Gosso, Weiss, Sainpedia, 10 members present and in favor, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for meeting with matters appearing on today's agenda. This is Tuesday, and the first meeting of the week, as is customary, and we have scheduled our salute to the flag. If I can ask everyone to please stand, and ask Councilmember Reyes to lead our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, everybody, please rise. Put your right hand over your heart, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes, and colleagues from the record, there's a young man who is taking the place of Councilmember Zine today. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Labange seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Councilmember Perry seconds.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. I believe there's a card on the item, and if the council wishes it should continue the hearing in the ordinance to September 12, 2003.
We do have a card submitted under item number one, let's call it special, we will hear from members of the public today, and continue the public hearing at that point.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, it's 2001 brush clearance, and there are four parcels, I believe there aren't any cards on this matter.
We do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on item number two, therefore we shall be in the public hearings, open and closed. Are there members of the council wishing to call item two special? Saying none, Madam Clerk, on item number two, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items three through 10 now before us, any specials we should want?
Ms. Han, item number three, special for Ms. Han.
Item three called special, any other specials? Mr. Ludlow.
I'm ahead of everybody.
Any other specials? Saying none on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ice.
Those are approved.
Next items, Mr. President, 11 through 27 are items which public hearings have not been held, and items 11 and 12 are pipeline franchises, and the bits have been received, and there are two companies, and they are listed on the agenda in Council's recommended recommendations.
Colleagues, items 11 through 27 now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, satisfying the public hearings. Are there any specials? Mr. Ludlow.
Item 26.
26 called special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials?
Anyone else special?
Any other specials?
Anyone else special?
11 through 27 now before us. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ice.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special, and as such, there are parts from the public.
Item number one now before us, and the council calls forward Susan Kennedy, followed by J. Eric Freedner.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Susan Kennedy. I'm here in opposition to the streetlighting opposition for the fair and valerio district of Sun Valley. I've lived 40 years in my present house. My block has lights, so why include my block in the proposed district? As far as I can tell, most of the proposed district has lights. No reasons were given for doing this other than new modern lights. Well, I have lights on my block, and according to old adage, if they ain't broke, don't fix it. You didn't say anything about crime prevention, but most of the crime in my neighborhood is committed, and they like it. You didn't elaborate on what you mean by new modern, if you mean pink, they are innovating, as proven by the late John Op of op light fame. And if you mean those god awful yellow sodium vapor lights, please, I beg of you, don't put those catastrophes there. I and most of my neighbors have installed additional security lights on our own property for driveways and backyards. One big advantage of our own personal lights is that we have control of an off switch, if they get into people's lights, into people's windows, inhibit sleeping. Other parts of the city that I've read about, notably Pacoima, and also parts of Granada Hills that I drive through on a weekly basis, have no lights, whatever. So if there is a necessity, a need to send out contracting bids, send them over to Pacoima and Granada Hills, where the people are begging to pay for the lights. New modern sounds very nice, but I'd like a new modern car, and the nearly $1,800 that you want to ding me for these lights that I don't want, would go a long way to helping me get a new car. This is a bad economy, and I have a senior citizens' dwindling income. I'm perfectly happy with the lights I have, and as far as I can tell, my neighbors are also. So if you do this anyway, you're only going to hasten my departure from the city of L.A., like so many businesses have. And if you really have to spend the money, spend it on something like this, that you find in every shopping mall, or better signage, because it took me two trips to Mr. Robertson down at the mayor's office to figure out where to come within this building. So I am opposed to the streetlight proposition, thank you.
Thank you very much, J. Eric Freedner, who's our next speaker.
Good morning. I am J. Eric Freedner, resident of the area. I had submitted a written protest, which I believe you may have, concerning the fact that when the streetlighting proposal was first made to us... We were told that the installation cost of the lights would be about $700 per house. I believe that came from either Councilman Bernardi, or Councilman Alarcón. As I also pointed out, a number of people have signed the initial petition, have moved out of the neighborhood, or have passed away, because a lot happens in about 18 years. During the time, the area to be lighted, expanded by maybe two or three times, originally it was just a few blocks. Then more blocks were added. We were told that when it expanded, the cost per house for installation would drop. Recently, we've just gotten word that now the cost per house is something like $1,500 or more. My house is being assessed $1,648 if this would pass. It seems to be somewhat unfair to start out with a petition of one sort, and one proposed price, and one map. It ended up with something quite a bit different. Thank you. I thank you very much for listening. This concludes public comment on item number one. Are there members wishing to be heard on item number one? Saying none, have the report and recommendations before us.
Mr. President, that one should be continued for the, to continue the hearing in ordinance to September 2nd.
To August, excuse me, September 2nd, which is three weeks from today. Next item, please.
Item number three was called special by Councilmember Han.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Han on item three.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. This was a motion that I introduced earlier, as a result of continually being very apprehensive in the harbor area about any potential disaster in the Port of Los Angeles, Port of Long Beach complex, whether or not it has to do with terrorism, or whether or not it's the odds of something happening there as a result of the containers that come in and out of the harbor on a daily basis. And the refineries in the harbor area have a system where they, in the event of an explosion, in the event of anything that happens to the refineries, they actually have a system where they automatically call the home numbers of residents in a particular geographical area surrounding the refineries. I asked whether or not the Port of Los Angeles could come up with a similar program, and they got together with the refineries, found out what they did, and actually got in place a program that does just the same thing. It utilizes the telephone network of homes, businesses in the area, so if anything happens at the Port of Los Angeles, we can automatically, quickly notify residents in terms of what they should be doing, and what kind of disaster it is. The second part of this motion, when it came to commerce, we also asked whether or not we could do something citywide. That is still the fear, I think, of a lot of people. If something happens big in the city, how can we quickly notify people in Los Angeles of what the disaster is, and then what's the proper action that should be taken, whether or not you stay inside, whether or not you have to evacuate, whether or whatever it is that you have to do. We've asked for ITA to work with LAPD, to work with the emergency preparedness department, and to work with other departments in the city, to come up with a similar program that will quickly and effectively notify people in Los Angeles in the event of a disaster or disaster. One of the ideas that came forward, which we're also asking them to do, apparently there's other places in the country where they develop, for lack of a better word, canned messages, which can automatically be played, depending on the disaster, depending on the emergency, and depending on the appropriate action that needs to be taken by residents, that we can play on Channel 35, we can play on radio stations. Working with our cable franchise agreements, to see whether or not we can override programming that is happening on cable stations with these canned messages. So that's the second part of this, so we're asking them to come back, tell us what the plan is, and hopefully that can get your approval for this action as we move forward. And I believe there's people from the harbor department, if we want to ask them, we have the representative of the police here, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
...for which public hearings have been held.
Items three through ten now before us, any specials? Ms. Han, item number three, special for Ms. Han. Item three called special. Any other specials? Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Saying none on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items, Ms. Wilson, eleven through twenty-seven are items which public hearings have not been held, and items eleven and twelve are pipeline franchises, and the bids have been received, and there are two companies, and they are listed on the agenda in council to draft the recommendations.
Calling the items eleven through twenty-seven now before us, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items satisfying the public hearings. Are there any specials? Mr. Ludlow.
Item twenty-six.
Twenty-six called special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Any other specials? Eleven through twenty-seven now before us. On the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number one was called special, and as such, there are parts from the public.
Item number one now before us, and the council calls forward Susan Kennedy, followed by J. Eric Friedner.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Susan Kennedy. I'm here in opposition to the streetlighting proposition for the fair and valerio district of Sun Valley. I've lived forty years in my present house. My block has lights, so why include my block in the proposed district? As far as I can tell, most of the proposed district has lights. No reasons were given for doing this other than new modern lights. Well, I have lights on my block, and according to old adage, if they ain't broke, don't fix it. You didn't say anything about crime prevention, but most of the crime in my neighborhood is committed, and they like. You didn't elaborate on what you mean by new modern, if you mean pink. They are innovating, as proven by the late John Op of op light fame, and if you mean those god awful, yellow sodium vapor lights, please, I beg of you, don't put those catastrophes there. I and most of my neighbors have installed additional security lights on our own property for driveways and backyards. One big advantage of our own personal lights is that we have control of an off switch, if they get into people's lights, into people's windows, inhibit sleeping. Other parts of the city that I've read about, notably Pacoima, and also parts of Granada Hills that I drive through on a weekly basis have no lights, whatever. So if there is a necessity, a need to send out contracting bids, send them over to Pacoima and Granada Hills where the people are begging to pay for the lights. New modern sounds very nice, but I'd like a new modern car, and the nearly eighteen hundred dollars that you want to ding me for these lights that I don't want would go a long way to helping me get a new car. This is a bad economy, and I have a senior citizen's dwindling income. I'm perfectly happy with the lights I have, and as far as I can tell, my neighbors are also. So if you do this anyway, you're only going to hasten my departure from the city of L.A., like so many businesses have. And if you really have to spend the money, spend it on something like this that you find in every shopping mall or better signage, because it took me two trips to Mr. Robertson down at the mayor's office to figure out where to come within this building. So I am opposed to the streetlight proposition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. J. Eric Friedner, who's our next speaker.
Good morning. I am J. Eric Friedner, resident of the area. I had submitted a written protest, which I believe you may have, concerning the fact that when the streetlighting proposal was first made to us, we were told that the installation cost of the lights would be about seven hundred dollars per house. I believe that came from either the office of Councilman Bernardi or Councilman Alarcón. As I also pointed out, a number of people have signed the initial petition, have moved out of the neighborhood, or have passed away, because a lot happens in about eighteen years. During the time, the area to be lighted, expanded by maybe two or three times. Originally, it was just a few blocks. Then more blocks were added. We were told that when it expanded, the cost per house for installation would drop. Recently, we've just gotten word that now the cost per house is something like fifteen hundred dollars or more. My house is being assessed sixteen hundred forty-eight dollars if this would pass. It seems to be somewhat unfair to start out with a petition of one sort and one proposed price and one map. It ends up with something quite a bit different. I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on item number one. Are there members wishing to be heard on item number one? Saying none, have the report and recommendations before us.
Mr. President, that one should be continued for the, to continue the hearing in ordinance to September second.
To August, excuse me, September second, which is three weeks from today. Next item, please.
Item number three was called special by Councilmember Han. Chair recognizes Councilmember Han on item three.
Thank you, Madam Chair colleagues. This was a motion that I introduced earlier as a result of continually being very apprehensive in the harbor area about any potential disaster in the Port of Los Angeles, Port of Long Beach Complex, whether or not it has to do with terrorism, or whether or not it's the odds of something happening there as a result of the containers that come in and out of the harbor on a daily basis. And the refineries in the harbor area have a system where they, in the event of an explosion, in the event of anything that happens to the refineries, they actually have a system where they automatically call the home numbers of residents in a particular geographical area surrounding the refineries. I asked whether or not the Port of Los Angeles could come up with a similar program, and they got together with the refineries, found out what they did, and actually got in place a program that does just the same thing. It utilizes the telephone network of homes, businesses in the area, so if anything happens at the Port of Los Angeles, we can automatically quickly notify residents in terms of what they should be doing, what kind of disaster it is. The second part of this motion, when it came to commerce, we also asked whether or not we could do something citywide. That is still the fear, I think, of a lot of people. If something happens big in the city, how can we quickly notify people in Los Angeles of what the disaster is, and then what's the proper action that should be taken, whether or not you stay inside, whether or not you have to evacuate, whatever it is that you have to do. So we've asked for ITA to work with LAPD, to work with the emergency preparedness department, and to work with other departments in the city to come up with a similar program that will quickly and effectively notify people in Los Angeles in the event of a disaster. One of the ideas that came forward, which we're also asking them to do, apparently there's other places in the country where they develop, for lack of a better word, canned messages, which can automatically be played depending on the disaster, depending on the emergency, depending on the appropriate action that needs to be taken by residents, that we can play on Channel 35, we can play on radio stations, working with our cable franchise agreements, to see whether or not we can override programming that is happening on cable stations with these canned messages. So that's the second part of this, so we're asking them to come back, tell us what the plan is, and hopefully that can get your approval for this action as we move forward. Thank you. And I believe there's people from the harbor department, if we want to ask them, we have the representative of the port police here, if anybody has any questions.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. It's a wonderful idea, Councilmember Han, and I know that the port police will be involved in this, and there's a representative here. Captain Tracy, if I may. Capitán, si puedo. Can he take the front table? Puede tomar la mesa enfrente? Thank you. Gracias. Captain Ralph Tracy, no relation to the famous law enforcement officer, Nick Tracy. Okay. That's pretty good. The process will involve the port police? Correct, in conjunction with LAPD, through Harbor Division's launch commander. And once the notification goes out, the organization, the entity, the business that caused that, they will be charged for that service. There is a fee for use based on the nature of the emergency, fee per call. There's also a provision that we would be able to access to return charge the parties that were responsible for the incident and responsible for the notification. And I know in Santa Fe, they have alert to the community, this is similar to that in Northern California, where they have the other nuclear power plants. It's somewhat similar, but we can tailor the message. Once the decision is made that there has to be a notification, you can prepare the tape recorder, the message in both English and in Spanish, goes to a massive phone bank, and it goes out to all the residents in the area that needs to be covered, and it allows us to do that for any kind of specific incident, whereas the Santa Fe type incident, they have a couple of key things they're interested in, so they're more focused on just that type of incident. But we could use this system for any type of incident within the Port of Los Angeles or the harbor area. And I know that the port is a target, yes, it is, I think, the largest port in the world for import export, and with all the homeland security issues and concerns, are there any of the ports that are adopting this plan? Not that I'm aware of at this time. So we'll be the leader, once again, in awareness and keeping our residents safe in the event of an incident. Well, we will certainly be out. So once an incident takes place, you'll have the capacity with the police department to instantaneously access and activate the system. Correct, and I'd be doing conjunction with the fire department, because they generally control any evacuation order, and we're just the mechanics to make it happen. Who, whose idea was this? We were requested by a council member to develop this system. Oh, councilman, what's councilman? Councilwoman Han. Councilmember Han came up with this really good idea to save lives for the people. Wonderful. Now, I just want to acknowledge the wonderful work of the port police, and I know that your activities down there speak well for the city of Los Angeles and commend my colleagues, because it is unusual that that particular area could have very unique problems that would affect the community, and we want obviously to keep our people safe, so I think it's a great idea, a great program. And if we have to use it, whoever causes that problem, we can charge them back, so it's not going to be a negative cost to the taxpayer. So congratulations to you, and also to our wonderful Councilwoman Han for coming up with this good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Chair recognizes Councilmember Laban.
I know. Okay, good. And I just want to ask one last question, if I could, for the port. For the port. How many of you remember the old air raid sirens? And I know they did a study, recently, that many of these air raid sirens are still in the streets of Los Angeles, but they can use. But obviously, inner workings to make them work. Are you looking at the air raid sirens? Many of them are not as operational, they could be. But the structure is there, or we have an easement there, or we have something that obviously has to be updated, but. Correct. We hope we have an investigation of that system, perhaps some we should look into. I just wanted to ask a friendly amendment that we look at the air raid sirens. As something to look at in an area such as that, I know in Santa Fe and Orange County, they have an air, they have a notification system based on the Edison Power Plant that's down there. I think that would be extremely important for the port or any part of Los Angeles. It is zero, a high potential where there's a quick, a quick change in the environmental condition, whether it's a manmade or a natural disaster, it would be. And the same thing for the air raid, if I could use it, I don't think the air raid is probably the proper term anymore, but in some other areas where there are dams, I don't see it represented for water and power here, but to look at some of the facilities where there's dams, in the event, not just of some type of terrorism, but a natural disaster that would take place, I'd just like to add a friendly amendment that we look at the, I don't want to call it air raid, so the public can help me with the proper term. A community signal notification. No, yeah, no. Alert, something like that. Okay, siren alert. Thank you, Ms. Han. All right, thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you, Ms. Han, for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. We now have before us item three with the amendment, friendly amendment that was offered by Mr. Laban. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen eyes. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Viera Regosa.
President, members, I'd like to ask that items eleven, twelve, be reconsidered. I checked with Ms. Han, and she supports that.
All right, members, items eleven and twelve have been added on. Mr. Viera Regosa has made a motion for reconsideration without objection. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen eyes. Mr. Viera Regosa.
Yes, and I'd like to move that they be held over until Friday.
All right, we have a motion to continue items eleven and twelve until Friday, so without objection, that will be the order. Next item, Madam Clerk. Item number twenty-six was called special by Councilmember Ludlow. Chair recognizes Mr. Ludlow on item twenty-six.
I'm fine, I don't want to withdraw it.
All right, if there's no one else who wishes to discuss item twenty-six, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Fifteen eyes. That matter is approved, we'll send that forth with. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. Thank you. Members of the council, it's now public comment time. We've had some cards submitted, let me call forward at this time to come to speak. Reverend Benjamin B.F. Brown, Armandis Herman, and Dennis Wierich. Please come forward to the microphone, the three members who I have called. Are they present? All right, I think they're coming forward.
How you doing? My name is Dennis Wierich. I'm here on behalf of Evergreen Park. I'm new to this, so let me speak.
Raise the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
My issues are at Evergreen Park, which is in need of a daycare center. They were presented with a building that was due to be built about eight years ago, and so they were promised this building, and they are no longer looking forward to the building. They were told by the city and the council members, so I'm just wondering where this money was allocated to, and the funds were of enormous amount, and this is before the Councilman Viera Regosa got to office in the fourteenth district. So the funds seem to have just kind of dissipated. I am, you know, just curious, like a constituent, trying to find out if the funds need to be brought back to the park in need of a daycare. The size of the daycare is not being able to grow, starting with the youth in that area. They've accomplished quite a bit. They went on to the World Series and presented a lot of conflict for the kids in the area. So there's a lot of need for this daycare. The daycare itself has grown to its capacity, and the fourteenth district is really in need of a daycare there. I'd like to just ask the council member to at least give it a thought and a look over, because the funds were of a great enormous amount of seven million dollars, and all they did was build a little grass area for them as a park.
All right, Mr. Wierich, I will ask Mr. Viera Regosa to ask his staff to come over and get your name and discuss the matter with you. So if Mr. Viera Regosa's staff can, all right, she will come over and talk to you on the side and get you that information.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The other two speaker cards that were submitted, Armandis Herman and Reverend Benjamin Brown.
Good morning, Councilboard. I'm here to bring into an open point of view that, and I'll just start off this way. Who is affected by the budget? Who should be responsible for the crowding out of what's going on today in Los Angeles and throughout the state of California? We have come here today to point out the strain and the pain brought upon three groups of people in Los Angeles. One has to do with minorities. The second has to do with the poor. And the one of most important is that of the disabled people. Budget has affected the lives of these people and the quality of life that is to be of importance to them as much as it is to me. So I'm here to bring this to your attention, and this is true everywhere. But, oh, my friends, it should be true as the ball in the political life. A broken promise is bad enough. It is worse, and feel the politics who say it's, on their, like contempt. But it has to change. People's lives are being affected by the budget. And we're overspending. The public looks to government to manage its taxes or our taxpaying dollars for everyone equally. We want equal pay in our communities. We want equal jobs in our community. For the equal of all. And an opportunity. Progressivism has found its way back in today's government that sought to rectify the widespread social and economic abuse, growing out of control, unchecked of corrupt low government. Not saying that it's anyone here, but give note to what I'm saying. The burden of the budget crisis is on those persons who can be clearly identified.
Sir, can I ask, can I ask you to conclude? We have other public speakers.
But please look into this matter. It's very important.
All right.
It's not just for Armando Herman, this is for the community of Boyle Heights.
All right. Again, Reverend Benjamin Brown, is he still with us? If not, we've had another card submitted, Aurora Rodriguez. Ms. Aurora Rodriguez.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Aurora Rodriguez.
Good morning, my name is Aurora Rodriguez.
Soy una trabajadora de McDonald's en el aeropuerto.
I'm a worker of McDonald's at the airport.
De la terminal Tom Bradley.
On the terminal Tom Bradley.
El año pasado, yo fui una de las trabajadoras.
Last year, I was one of the workers.
Que vino ante ustedes para hablar en contra de las condiciones de trabajo.
That came before you to talk about the conditions at work.
En McDonald's.
At McDonald's.
Durante ese tiempo, la compañía nunca nos informó.
During that time, the company never informed us.
Sobre los derechos de ser compensados cuando nos accidentáramos.
About the rights of being compensated when we have an accident.
Varios de mis compañeros se lastimaron.
Several coworkers got injured.
Y muchos no recibieron asistencia médica ni compensación.
And many did not receive medical compensation or treatment.
Yo fui uno de esos trabajadores que fue lastimado varias veces.
I was one of those workers that was injured several times.
El año pasado, yo me caí.
Last year, I fell.
Y McDonald's nunca me mandó al doctor.
And McDonald's never sent me to the doctor.
Solo me dijo que me podía ir a la casa sin compensación.
They only told me that I could go home with that compensation.
También como cocinera, yo estuve expuesta mucho tiempo al calor y frío.
Also, as a cook, I was exposed a lot of, for a long time, for cold and hot.
Dentro de un turno de ocho horas, uno está expuesta a calor y frío.
During, in an eight-hour shift, you're exposed to a lot of heat and cold.
Lo mínimo durante la jornada tres veces.
The minimum during the eight-hour shift, three times.
Dado a estas condiciones de trabajo, yo me enfermé de los huesos.
Given these conditions of work, I got sick from my bones.
De los ojos, y me fracturé mi columna.
From my eyes, and I fractured my back.
Yo metí un reclamo de compensación al trabajador.
I put a complaint against the workers' compensation.
Pero hasta ahora, McDonald's no ha querido tomar esa responsabilidad.
But up to now, McDonald's have not wanted to take responsibility.
Por el daño que causaron las condiciones de trabajo.
Because of the damage that the conditions of work caused.
En sus tiendas del aeropuerto.
At the stores at the airport.
Estoy aquí, señores, para pedirles ayuda.
I'm here to ask you for help.
Y su apoyo como líderes.
And your support as leaders.
De esta ciudad para que McDonald's empiece a ser responsable.
So that McDonald's can be, start becoming responsible.
Y respete a sus trabajadores.
And respect their workers.
Gracias por su apoyo.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. That was the last card that had been submitted. I'm sorry, all right, there seems to be one more card. Rosalba Mata.
Good morning, Circazo. My name is Rosalba Mata. I'm an organizer with Lain, which organized the McDonald's workers to earn the living wage. The reason that I'm going to speak to you today is because we were expecting other coworkers of them, but they're not here yet. The one thing that I want to let you know is that McDonald's don't comply with no workers at all. We have one of the workers that it was sexual harassment, and she is told before you last year. And McDonald's also took the responsibility for those cases, okay? It was three women who got harassed by one of their managers. In another case, we have somebody who was unjustifiedly fired, because she has an ulcer. And she was pregnant at the time, and she has a doctor's note that supposedly we eat meals every, like, four meals a day. And because somebody, one of the managers saw her eating a cookie. Behind doors. This worker got reprimanded by McDonald's and got fired. So I, I ask you, please, help these workers. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public hearing. Mr. Garcetti.
I want to thank the workers for coming here today. Gracias a los trabajadores por venir. Por venir aquí hoy. Cada vez que los trabajadores están visitando el concejo municipal, hemos ayudado. Each time you've come here, we have helped, and this time we will help as well. We'll make sure that we look into this, and we do everything for you. So thank you very much for coming. Again, gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That does conclude public comment. Madam Clerk, what is before us? Council has motions for posting on referral. They are posted and referred. There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, City Business, that meets council policy. Mr. Garcetti is excused on that date. Councilmember Viera Regosa requests to be excused Wednesday, August sixth, City Business, that meets council policy. Mr. Viera Regosa is excused. Councilmember Zine and Council President Padilla request to be excused Tuesday and Wednesday, September ninth and tenth, California Mega Cities, City Business, that meets council policy. Mr. Zine and Mr. Padilla are excused. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, August thirteenth, to leave at eleven a.m. for City Business, that also meets council policy. Mr. Cardenas is excused deliberately on that date, and that closes it up, Madam President. All right, members, the desk is cleared. Are there any announcements? Mr. Laban?
Yes, I, members, I just wanted to mention there was, as I spoke of Friday, Marcus Allen going to the Pro Football Hall of Fame. James Lofton, who was an academic All-American at Stanford, also went into the Pro Football Hall of Fame. His greatest days were in Buffalo, but he didn't play for the Los Angeles Raiders and the Packers, among other teams. He's now a coach for the San Diego Chargers, and his great L.A. connection, he went to Washington High School in the city of Los Angeles. So I think that's a wonderful tribute to our city and our people, that our coaches and our teachers, that these athletes at one point reached their greatest, I guess tribute would be the Pro Football Hall of Fame, the Baseball Hall of Fame, as we spoke of. Eddie Murray and Gary Carter the week prior to that. So hail to Marcus Allen and to James Lofton and all the others, including the great coach of the Kansas City Chiefs, Hank Stram. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Ludlow, for announcement.
Just to add to that, not only did Lofton have that lofty career, but it started at Baldwin Hills Pop Warner Football in the 10th District. And so Vera Ford and everybody that's been out there for 20 years, your work paid off. The youngster made it great and got into the Hall of Fame. So thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, any adjourned motions, members? If there are no adjourned tributes today, this council will call the roll. Council is adjourned.